Monday, April or June 3rd, please stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ken.
Councilman Scranton.
Present.
Councilman Livingston.
Present.
Councilman McCrofts.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Papstra.
Present.
Councilman Mossow.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
All seven here.
Okay. Up first is Jerry, Steve Carson, RL 112. Thank you, 112.
So these are the, this is the mayor's annual proposed budget. This is for fiscal year forty-five, CBVG home ESG funded. Um, not asking for this to be expedited, so uh, by the next quarter section we'll have as well in the immunist format that needs to be passed as part of the, you know, the passive budget. The city council passed it, it'll be included in the two thousand and twenty budget. Um, typically, I think with this, uh, I kinda go through any, uh, major differences with the CDAC recommended budget, which I know the city council had a presentation on last month. Uh, I will say that, you know, as in previous years, uh, ESG has remained, um, uh, the same. Uh, we have a slight change from home, but those entitlements are, we generally follow the CDAC recommendations. Um, so if you'd like, I'll kinda go from the top down, I discuss some of the differences and then, um, answering questions if you have this morning. So in the administration and planning aspect, uh, lockstep with, um, uh, lockstep with CDAC, thousand dollar change in, in fair housing based on previous, uh, bills for that. Uh, economic development, housing and code enforcement, again, lockstep with CDAC. And as we move into the community development programming, we have a couple of increases in public infrastructure improvements and parks improvements, uh, slight reduction in home purchase assistance and repairs. Uh, it was a big jump that the CDAC took and, uh, we just didn't feel that was a, we felt that it was a little bit too mu- uh, big a jump. I'm more with the lead risk assessment, having your funding available. Uh, we view the homeless capital improvements, we had this year, human services capital set aside, so we felt that that was implicated. Um, we will be doing operations to ensure that the, the homeless service providers also have an ability and, and are aware of the human, uh, services capital set aside competitive grant program. Uh, certainly good news that the section won't wait long, I think everyone's aware of that. Um, traffic safety improvements, we'll, uh, incorporate within public infrastructure. It is a little bit more, uh, broad in scope with that funding. Um, we're leaving eighty-five thousand for the senior home repair program. This is the first year that we're doing it with First Word Action Council, had a bump up from thirty-five thousand they used to have. So we wanna, you know, give it a full year. I think it's a great program and I can see us boosting in the future. We just wanna be through a year before we start throwing a significant amount of money at it. Uh, demolition, fire removal, capital program set aside, all the same. Uh, we have a line item for the Northside Chow Grocery Store. It's part of the city's hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, support for that project in terms of capital funding. Uh, and leave human services capital set aside and ownership academy, uh, the same. Moving to the public service program, before we begin, I'll let Steve explain and be very clear when it comes to the public service cap and why these activities are split off in categories. We have a community development program and then we have public services. There's a hard cap on these. Um, we're slightly below the cap, but in terms of adding additional tens of thousands of dollars, it just would not be, be viable if we had our cap at two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. Steve, if you wanna talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, it's, it's set at fifteen percent of your, your overall budget. Um, the issue with funding at the cap is that if all the other expenses are not expensed properly and your service money is spent, then when you do your calculation for your reporting, you'll be over percentage-wise, because you do a snapshot time for every time you do your report. So if for some reason, let's say, not very many roads are built or we don't do a bunch of demolitions, but all the human service funds are used, then when we go, we may be at twenty percent. So HUD's response typically with this, if you exceed the cap, is that with general funds, you have to pay it back, uh, the difference. So you can go up to the cap, but it's dangerous. It's always a good idea to err on the side of caution with that.
So, um, in the, uh, public service programming, uh, we did boost from fiscal year forty-four, human services up another roughly fifteen thousand, uh, reduced from the CDAC recommendation. Um, OT, uh, Park Rangers, same as last year. Uh, we do have a line item, as did the opioid addiction recovery, forty-five thousand to fifty thousand to support the, um, after-hours program, the Boys and Girls Club. This has been our program. We've found, uh, previous year's money and past years, and I think it's a really worthy one that we'd like to add into the budget to ensure that, uh, the fund will be available. Um, so that is, is the CBVG portion of the budget. Um, if I can answer any questions regarding CBVG, I wanna go to those.
Questions? Councilor.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, the thirty grand for security cameras, is that, uh, it's my understanding there was a discussion about the location of those at the CDAC. Is, is that gonna be earmarked for a specific area?
Uh, not here. Uh, it can be earmarked, uh, if, if everybody wants it to be. It has to be done in a low-mod residential area. So for example, downtown would not qualify. Um, it has to be a low-mod, uh, inner residential area that it has to qualify for. We'd have to do a service area in the cap.
I, I heard there was a discussion that, that these would be for the area around Town and Country.
Oh, see that?
Yeah.
I couldn't speak to that. I, I, that's why they come and do the presentation, because I feel like I'm always gonna mess up whatever they're recommending on that. Um, if that's how they wanted to do it, I mean, I could ask, I could send out an email and verify that, that you guys know if that's what they wanted.
That would be, I don't know, the mayor's office is gonna take on that.
We're really looking for to, to put.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the two northside intersections, I think, were, uh, it was Robert Street and another street, then, uh, Schenandoah Beltway, were identified by BP. The issue with, uh, the area around Town and Country is the live site, the trees, to get the signal up to, I think the state office is where they all are. That wasn't an area that was identified. We're looking at some others that, that were not able to be installed because they were highly commercial areas. It was the south side, it was the west side. But, um, I know Katie Cross, your district, you're looking, the Wall Street area, we're trying to find a location of what was there. We got with the live site issues, we had Robert Street, and also CBVG. I, I know the chief would support that, so we're trying to work through.
Yeah, and then, I mean, I need to do more research on that before the final vote, but do you guys have any, I don't know, just because this is new, correct me if I'm wrong, this is new, but is there, is there like evidence about security cameras and what they do about the Terry crime? I mean, is there, is there evidence behind that? Is there, I guess what was the rationale on this new budget lineup? That, that's one of the things that I'm getting explained.
We, we view this as one of the strongest recommendations from the CDAC. In addition to, again, I think a neighborhood group in that you were working with that just wanted a CDAC funded, um, you know, we, they're expensive, the chief likes to, you know, add in, in terms of on a yearly basis, it costs about ten thousand a piece. So we're not talking about a large number, but if there's some high traffic areas.
So this would be for free?
Roughly yes. And it depends on, um, it depends on what kind of deals we can get. Again, the installation cost is the highest amount. I think it's, you sold me the past three thousand for the actual physical camera on that. The other infrastructure needed, the signals, the mobile, uh, stuff in that, the backend here at City Hall, is the remainder.
Gotcha. I do think Green County GAS, uh, they used to be doing some of the mapping for crime data, so it's entirely possible that they can pull together like a overtime map of crime, um, levels in various, various, that had that cameras. We could ask them on that. It's a before and afters, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, at least in the big intent of me solving crimes, using, utilizing cameras and CRT and solving crimes and identifying the hotspots is more than, you know, we have people that obviously watch them, but it's not somebody stationed there looking at things going on.
Councilman Scranton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, two things. Um, number one, Councilman Taylor, just one suggestion I would offer with regard to the data regarding, right? So I think what Steve was talking about is those, um, kind of heat colored maps where they're showing different neighborhoods. You just have to keep in mind that there's a lagged effect, right? So in year one, if there's crime, then no camera, and in year two, there is crime and a camera. Just because you're seeing a plateau effect or even maybe a slight increase, that doesn't correlate to camera not working, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because many people don't know that the camera's there, right? And then number two, you would need, you would actually need like five to ten years' worth of data of camera not there and camera there to actually say, you know, quarterly, there, there actually is a positive effect, right? From a police standpoint, I would imagine, you know, license plates. Um, I mean, I know in War, for example, in the first district, there have been a number of meetings where constituents at particular hotspots have actually asked for that. And I can even tell you just from two weeks ago, there was actually an arrest that was able to be made from a drug thing that occurred near Glenwood, literally because there was a camera on someone's home surveillance system that was able to pick it up and they were able to provide that video surveillance to.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that.
No, it's a good question. I'm just saying.
It may not be less crime, but it'd be crime solved.
Correct, yeah, exactly. It's just, it's just important.
Yeah, it does work on Edward Street, because they know the cameras are there.
My second question was, Steve, you had mentioned with regard to the public service programming area, that there's reporting that occurs.
Okay, yeah.
Um, how many times is that reported? Is that per quarter, per month?
Per year, it's the K for report.
Just the one, right?
Right.
Is that like an end-of-year report or?
Yeah, it's an end-of-year report. It's a snapshot time. They look at everything done, the, um, numbers of people served, um, just to see how we're doing. And the two big things they check is to make sure we don't exceed the cap on public services, we don't exceed the cap on administration planning. And my understanding is that if we do, uh, they will make us pay it in the interim months, as a matter of fact.
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Livingston.
Question about the, uh, the Northside Chow Grocery Store, the seventy-five thousand, is that, so I don't know a whole lot about the, um, the business plan for this Chow Grocery Store. Is this likely to be a recurring, uh, seventy-five thousand over a certain number of years, or is it just sort of like seed money for the first year of operation?
Seed money and capital. So this would not be, we wouldn't be running a continual check. Uh, but the city had committed to a hundred and fifty thousand in, uh, CBVG funded. This is part of our, knowing that the project will be getting in line next year, part of the commitment, and then we'll, uh, fine the seventy-five thousand, let it be a little cost.
Um, then another question, thank you for that. Another question I have.
But I would say that I would rule out that in the future, if Chow wanted to apply for the city's competitive pot money for human service money, for job training as associated with the store, um, I'm sure you would probably support that.
And that's where you transition from a capital expense to a servicing expense, and then it gets into the met, the mix of the maximum amount of spending on service program.
Got it. And then the, uh, the other question is about the, um, the twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, less in the mayor's proposed budget versus the CDAC proposed budget for senior housing repair program. Um, my question is, so we already, as I recall, we already dealt with a, um, a budget adjustment, uh, this year to increase the allocation to that program. Um, and my understanding from one of my constituents is that it has a pretty long wait period, like a four-year or three-year wait period for the senior housing repair program?
No, that one's actually pretty quick.
Is it really?
They're, they're probably referring to our home repair.
Home repair program.
That one's gotta wait. The senior home repair program is actually very quick. Uh, we've updated it this year to make sure we're following regulations. The extra money is being used not just for the regular expenses, which they normally do, but these are things like light bulbs changed or, or fixing a railing. Um, those can be approved within, uh, twenty minutes of beginning the application. But they also are going for larger proj- projects. I don't have a, I can't remember exactly which, which one I've seen lately, but I believe they were doing like a porch repair, which was gonna cost like five thousand dollars. Um, normally they do very small repairs. This additional money's enabling to do larger repairs, but it requires extra regulation, uh, probably another week or two onto the, the turnaround time from when they apply, if they're eligible for it. So there, there could be like a half, half a month wait maybe.
Okay, that's good. And then, and just a final question, is there, um, a reason for why this, uh, the, this budget, proposed budget came in, uh, today, not like Friday?
Yeah, we were answering some last minute questions that is related to the, the home side of things. So there were some regulatory questions that we wanted to make sure that I got answered and then, um, even as of this morning, we're changing some numbers based on will we be allowed, will not be allowed to release the show of the project. And also no, I don't think it's being voted on until.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so, um, we, we wanna make sure that our questions were answered.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And then, Jodo, your home ESG, assuming that that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Like I said, we're gonna have.
Chuck, move where I can see it, Mr. Eric. Move where I can see it, if you can, Eric.
That's my RL one nine eight, one one zero.
How about this back in Marjorieville, San Diego, and, uh, when we did the budget last year, we put in a hundred thousand dollar credit, because we know we always fall short of not filling positions or cleaning up some of the salaries and reduce the budget. We took the hundred thousand dollars credit in last year. This RL is basically balancing out that hundred thousand, bringing that negative one hundred thousand to a zero and reducing otherwise, uh, by a hundred thousand dollars on the budget.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Chuck. The ground, one nine eight, one one one.
One nine, one one one. Uh, in last year's budget, we, um, proposed, uh, increasing retiree health insurance from twenty-five to thirty percent. We sent out a letter in, um, we'd say mid to late November to all the retirees, letting them know that. Uh, we got a very strong, um, response, uh, to them complaining about giving them a one, um, one notice to take their rates from twenty-five percent to thirty percent. Uh, at that time, uh, we discussed it, uh, with them and decided that we pulled off the doing it till July first. Uh, of course, none of them are excited about it going from twenty-five to thirty percent, but the biggest thing that they really wanted is to get it in the city charter, okay? As of now, it really falls in my department's hands to make that decision, the mayor's, okay? They really didn't like that. They really wanted it in the charter so that it has to come to council. You guys have to vote on it, to raise it, okay? I will tell you that, that the people we talked to are, are okay with this. If we put it in the charter, taking it from twenty-five to thirty, uh, that's the most important thing. They're afraid that it's gonna go from thirty to fifty in a very short period of time, which isn't the intention here. Uh, some of the things that they don't truly underst- or they didn't understand is, in two thousand and fifteen, the cost of retiree health insurance to the city was two point five million dollars, okay? Actually, two point four. And they were paying about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. Altogether, it's three point two, and they were paying about eight hundred and twenty-four. Two thousand and seventeen, it jumped up to three million, one hundred and fifty thousand, and they were only paying eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, okay? Um, so the idea of doing this was to help us capture some more of that money. What really happens is the people under sixty-five are the driving force behind this. Uh, when they retire from anywhere from forty-five to sixty-five, they're the ones that are self-insured. They're, they're the ones that are eating it. If you would look at the reports, you'd see that those numbers are phenomenally expensive, okay? I mean, that's probably unfair to the population, okay? They're the ones that are gonna use it, but they're actually, uh, the ones that are driving up the cost of health insurance to the city.
Questions or comments? Councilor Papstra.
Thank you. Uh, Chuck, when you say from forty-five to sixty-five, let's say, um, I'll use the twenty-year, like the police force can retire after twenty-year, uh, duty of, uh, as a policeman. Uh, so let's say they get on, they're twenty-two, they can retire at forty-two. Do, do they have that insurance from forty-two right up, up to sixty-five, or is it?
Took for the rest of their life.
But it starts at the time where they're retired?
Yes, yes. And their dependents, they cover it until they hit either twenty-six or.
Okay, so the family plan is the same, either single or family, they can have either way.
Correct.
Now, the, the retirees that are at sixty-five and up, uh, even though they're being raised five percent, their, their actual premium is probably down.
Yes, we, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, the cost of their plan was three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, we hired a new consultant to come in and work with us on healthcare, and he got that reduced in November down to two oh five for this year. So it was a huge savings for them, uh, which is majority of people. I think it's, there's about a hundred retirees, uh, under sixty-five, and there's like four hundred and twelve, I think, under sixty-five. They saw pretty good savings. If you take twenty-five percent of three fifty versus thirty percent of two hundred, um, they actually, it's not a nice reduction in their, actually more money in their retirement chances.
So, uh, put things in perspective, let's say you're a forty-five-year-old family man, uh, and you have a family plan, city health insurance family plan. Um, and what's the, without insurance, what, or what, what is the, the cost for, for a person?
For a person.
Of what, family class? Is it like fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand?
And what does it cost the cities?
Well.
And which plan?
We have.
For different tiers.
I mean, for all the retirement, it's almost all the same here.
For all the under sixty-five, it's costing us per retiree in two thousand and eighteen, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars per retiree alone.
Wow, alright, so we're looking at thirty. So fourteen.
Nineteen. Nineteen.
How much was the salary, one thousand what?
Seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
One thousand seven hundred. Nineteen thousand dollars. So out of that, if they're paying, uh.
That's our cost. That's the city's cost, is twenty thousand eight fifty-six.
Alright, so the retiree at forty-five years old, family plan pays what?
About seven, seventy-five hundred dollars. We, still have those, those, seven thousand dollars a year.
No, they're not thirty to that net, that's the problem. I think they pay a total of, it's less than four hundred dollars a month for family plan, which is usually four hundred dollars times twelve. So they're paying about forty-eight hundred, they're paying about forty-eight hundred dollars a year.
Forty-eight hundred dollars a year.
So the overall cost of that plan is about twenty-five thousand.
You're right. So if they're paying forty-eight hundred, that was before the increase?
That is as of right now.
Alright, so with a five, so the five percent increase for, for the retiree that's paid the most, uh, it's gonna cost them what?
About an extra thousand dollars a year.
An extra thousand dollars a year, in my terms of. So.
And that's hot, which I think is like ninety-nine hundred dollars for a family plan. I think that's a individual's. I think it's a pretty good deal to be on the street in there. I know as a businessman, I'm a forty. Fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars a year. And we got a very lucrative insurance. We got very low prices, yeah. That's a fact.
Other questions or comments?
Uh, just a, a process question. You said that, uh, you mentioned a couple of times that there were people that you spoke with about these retirees. What was the process you went through to, uh, to find retirees to talk to to get a sense for, you know, the temperature.
We sent out a letter to every retiree, said we were gonna have a meeting to discuss this with them, okay, so.
So it was an in-person meeting and, and so that's where you, you checked the temperature of the retirees? Okay. How many people showed up? I'm just curious.
You go, ten, I was gonna say probably fifty.
I was gonna say at least a few dozen from what I heard. I heard it was sort of like a.
So forty-four.
And you said it was, the temperature was hot, but you were, you were characterizing this as, you know, generally well, um, well-received, this plan. But what were they hot about?
Well, they were hot all the time, you know, like right before Christmas, coming in over January, you know, five percent. And, and the people that were over sixty-five were having, they were just gonna decrease, and that's the most of the hundred, um, sixty-five that were part of the pass.
How, how many other are under sixty-five?
There's a hundred people, there's a hundred retirees under sixty-five, and there's four hundred and twelve over, over sixty-five.
So you talked about this with us a month ago. But could you talk a little bit more about what I think you at the time characterized as ballooning costs to the city?
Yes.
If this change wouldn't happen?
This is basically gone. The, the, in two thousand and fifteen.
Right, but I'm talking about the future. I'm talking about what this would be, what, what's, what's the difference to the city, you know, four, three, four, five years from now?
The whole is continuing going on, okay? To give everyone an example of what could happen, um, not this past week, the weekend before, um, the FDA passed a drug, it's called a biosimilar drug, okay, where someone that is born with a spinal disease, okay, has a normal lifespan of like one to two years, with a lot of medical bills. Um, if there's a new drug out there that they can give the person one time, okay, that they find very successful, and the kid will, or the child will live a very healthy life, the cost, two million dollars one time. We would, we would end up covering two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that bill. And then our stock loss payment will go up after that. But those are some of the type of things we hit, uh, which I will send you up. I just hit a review with Excel, it's our healthcare, and you can see that some of the pharmaceutical drugs are, we need five pharmaceutical drugs over a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, that are gonna be there for every single year.
Well, the thing is, the, the cost is gonna be cast out of the taxpayer.
Yes.
As it has in, in past years, some of the biggest tax hikes have been through pension costs, health insurance costs. The city is obligated to be paying.
And we've been actually, I would say, very lucky in the last five years here, okay? This year, um, in the month of March, is the first time, we have like limits of what, I can't really say the terminology, but they call it a limit that usually is a, um, self-insure plan. It's the first time since I've been here that we've actually gone negative by, um, negative by like five thousand dollars. Normally, we have, we get a cushion, okay, going against it, and we ate into that cushion, um, in March, for the first time since, during two thousand and fourteen. And it's mostly pharmaceutical drugs going on as well. When I say pharmaceutical drugs, someone gets cancer, someone has, you know, some heart problems, you know, you have those operation costs and stuff like that. It's all medicine, pharmaceutical costs afterwards, they keep adding that, the cost of, um, cancer drugs are phenomenal.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you. Um, Chuck, uh, as this has been going along, um, as you would have extended the marketing units, going involved in the overall process.
Not involved, that's an entirely different question. This is just.
Were retirees, were the retirees?
They've had some conversation, voiced some concerns, okay, and what they wanted.
Right.
This is not the end of this, okay? And we'll tell you that.
Okay, you have my next question, so go ahead.
Uh, there's a lot of things that we need to put in writing, okay? Everything, since I've been here prior to me, has always been done in the controller's office.
Right.
And I will tell you that people in that office would make decisions that I wouldn't know about, okay? And I'm sure the people before me would make decisions, uh, that weren't always fair, okay?
Right.
Wouldn't be, they wouldn't treat Gil the same way that they treat Josh, okay? Can't be that way, okay? One of the things is how many times can you leave the retirement, um, insurance and come back on, okay? Technically, we've always set up this once, people that have done it all. Technically, we've always set it as once, because there are people that have done it multiple times, okay? Should not be that way.
How do you go about leaving it? I don't understand. You leave it, how do you leave it?
Say that-
Yeah, you have spouse that gets a job and then the spouse can get insurance for the things like through their job, something like that.
Then they can bounce back into it.
Yes.
Our goal would probably be to have the employees committee spend some time, or a long-term solution, be fair and dive into what needs to be as part of the charter. That, that's the biggest thing that the retirees are looking for, is, you know, set up rules that apply to everyone that for the first time, or for the first time in a long time, that it's written as part of the law.
There's a laundry list of things.
Was it since nineteen ninety-four that there hasn't been any, anything that's written on this list?
My knowledge, there's written, ever? There was one thing about, um, health insurance paying twenty-five percent. New York State was part of the New York State plan that hasn't existed. But there's been nothing about. I mean, the only thing that's out there that's in the contracts is who's eligible. How long he had to work in the city, and different time periods, and different unions, as well as different people. Some people are at ten years, some people are not. Anyone that started after, I'll say two thousand and eleven, this has to be your twenty years.
So you just actually tiptoed into my third question. I'm gonna read from here. It says, subsection one twenty-four dash two six one. City of Binghamton will provide continued health insurance coverage for eligible retired employees as follows. I really, really hate to sound like a lawyer here, but what defines eligible?
That goes back to the collective bargaining agreements, and there's a section in twenty-four, forty-four, about non-union employees.
Okay, so there is a-
There are definitions of-
Okay, alright, that's what I was wondering.
Primarily the collective bargaining agreement, but I don't remember when, since I've been here, we wrote in the non-union part, because that didn't exist.
Yeah, I, I've seen that in the respective bargaining union contracts that have come our way. I just, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I didn't think it was a blanket thing citywide, but I just, so, the respective bargaining units have to say so in that when contract renegotiations come up since. Besides whatever's-
Eligibility is, is in the contract.
Correct. Thank you.
Other questions, Dick Adams? Thanks, Chuck. I'm Ken Frank with Earl one nine, dash one zero.
Ah, okay. You have to pack it out. It's a letter from New York State DTC under the Clean Water Infrastructure Act of twenty seventeen. Basically, the DTC has the obligation to do inspections of certain properties. They picked our water plant as one of those properties to do the inspection. Were required to do it, the law provides for it, but they do want us to sign an agreement. And when I read it, it said that these are for municipal properties. They wanted to make sure that it was approved by the legislative body.
Questions, Dick Adams?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks, Ben. I'm Charlie Crusoe. One minute, zero five. Good morning, Charlie.
Dear Lord, thank you, we request four legislative actions. The first one, we are requesting an increase in accounts and penalties line, the budget of sixty thousand dollars for the contingency line. The wire payment of penalties placed down, caused by the DTC. First one is for BODTSS, it's five thousand dollars. And then there's phase one and phase two now, we're picking up phase two, which is each of these is five thousand dollars because production management is failing to achieve mandated completion dates.
And what's for when to when?
The BODTSS started in September of two thousand and eighteen. Now around the second consent order. The phase one was for the cells one through six.
But had to have contained all of them in that?
We've been paying phase one so far this year, five thousand lots to make. And phase two, we're just picking up in June. There's currently twenty thousand dollars in the account. I'm just preparing to check, June will be fifteen, and these are five, so I'm asking this. For sixty thousand dollars, we'll take it through hopefully October. I don't know if there are any plans to achieve in these phases, but currently we are unable to produce at the DTC or others.
Well, my, my first comment on this is why, I mean, obviously, we're not meeting these deadlines, and I think this is now the third, probably the fourth time that I'm saying this in the past few months, but why hasn't the project manager, Ron Lake, come to a, to a city council meeting to discuss this with us? Cause, cause I, um, you know, I mean, we're paying these fines now, and we're not, I don't have any answers about why, why this construction is still behind after so many years. So, you know, I'll just make a request now for the third or fourth time, get Ron Lake here to talk to us about the act of construction.
Okay, it's probably gonna be a while for Ron to be back here.
What happened?
He's outside?
He's taking his place?
Yeah, for a second.
Yeah, that's-
Some of it comes as charity.
So who's, who's managing right now?
Right now, it's still, uh, Ron.
How long has he been on cycle four?
Actually, he hasn't had surgery today.
Tomorrow? Tomorrow.
He was expecting to be back here shortly. But the answer to your question, now, we, we had a meeting with, um, General Captain, uh, Jacobs, and they believe that they're hopeful that they can have the August 31st deadline, okay? In this long time. Worst case, they could already have a week to consent over, if it's two weeks later than that. But they're still hopeful that they're gonna have the August 31st date. That was as of, is that Friday or Thursday?
So, that was one of my questions, was how many twenty can we leave to get through to the water? Twenty five, what is it?
Two thousand for July.
You're done.
Ten thousand for July, thirteen thousand for August, and one fact up for July.
It's also based on chemical composition, CO2 and TSS, and you can have those things completed. We're not gonna be getting those limits until full VAF is qualified. So just because they have to build doesn't mean it's gonna be out.
Chuck, why, why are they confident in those dates this time? I don't wanna question their confidence, but obviously, you've heard that line more than I have, Rob. So why, why are they confident?
I think they've heard the confidence that they had last year. I mean, I don't get asked, the mayor's our own common, and just passing meetings on Jacobs, maybe should have stated that, or forcing issues with the path directors.
Okay, I guess, I mean, I, I wanna be confident. I was just at the plant last week, and, uh, I guess, from so many meetings, I've heard that, you know, oh, this construction site's supposed to have hundreds of people on it, and now they're working all, all these extra shifts to get this done, to meet, you know, to make sure that we don't have to pay these fines and all this stuff, meet these dates. And I, I don't think I saw more than two dozen, maybe three dozen people maximum, that were actually contractors, working. And I, and I toward, I would say, the majority of that plant. I mean, Charlie, obviously, was there, uh, he works there, I mean, is that, I never asked to ask if that's a, is that a, is it standard to see that? I mean, I was after that, very worried that, that we weren't gonna be meeting that August 31st date, and that we'd have to be paying more and more of these fines into the end of twenty nineteen, into twenty twenty. I mean, I, I, I guess, from actually being at the plant, I didn't have that confidence that maybe the mayor's had. So, I, I, I hope you'll forgive me for, for asking this question again, but what was that indicative of, of what you typically see?
People are encouraged participation, there's people behind me who are there every day. I would say that was a fairly typical day, maybe a little fewer, because it was just before the long weekend, so they knocked off a couple days extra. I can't say I'm not in the bowels of the plant every day, but, uh, they're gonna complete CN, the magnification cells one through six by the end of August. I'm not a civil engineer, but I bet against it. And they have the rest of them by the end, or they're supposed to have them by June. We don't get update meetings, there's songs that the Craig goes through.
I have it, Charlie, by August 31st, we're supposed to have CN cells one through eight online, all four DN cells, backwash waste tank, backwash treatment system, headworks, all modifications at headworks, primary clarified modifications, and permanent CPT system up and running, and UV disinfection, and this whole sticker is done.
By August 31st.
Unless they opt these steps to productivity, it's not gonna have current rate, run rate, you know, you can see it, not a civil engineer.
And, and Charlie, at the, at the last business meeting, when you came and spoke, you mentioned that they, that they had installed things against the manufacturer's recommendations. The manufacturer stated that this will cause future problems, that obviously we'll have to pay to fix, and, 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 I mean-
That is a caution too. Somebody should be looking at these, this work and either signing off and accepting it as acceptable, or denying it.
Right.
Not accepting it.
Well, that's my question, is, is this August 31st date that they have confidence in, does that include fixing the, you know, the very expensive mistakes that they made?
All, all four of the influence valves for the city of Binghamton were installed backwards, and they're the size of like a box truck. They're, maybe, they, they look that big, at least, from where I was at.
They're in the doors.
Okay, well, I guess I wasn't that high up, but I, I didn't get the-
Boilage.
They're huge, anyways, maybe not, it's maybe a ton of box truck. But they're big, and-
And the thing is, we have to shut off the city of Binghamton's flow, to replace it, we can't do, order the tar and the way it's set up.
Well, those were installed, they were bypassed in the wet wells, the bypass pump. The bypass pump is better dismount than move the full site. The wet wells now, they're huge. The only way you can turn those valves into the right position is to go on back in the bypass pump, in the drain. So it's not easy.
The DTC doesn't care about that, it's not a problem.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why I'm asking, is because we're gonna pay to sell.
It could have been very significant, it's all they have, several, several times. If those fail, anybody working in that channel, they're assigned, they're gonna call someone.
Should they be responsible for, if they're put on wrong, someone be responsible, they would have to eat the cost of fixing it.
The meeting folks went to over there was that with Jacobs?
No, that was with the sewer management. Well, we did a tour.
Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe there should be an inspection with Jacobs.
It would be good to get that on site.
I mean, I didn't see any, I didn't, and again, I was only there for a two or three hour period, but I didn't see anyone inspecting anything. I didn't see more than a couple dozen contractors working, um-
What day were you there, Cameron? What day was that?
That was, uh, last Friday. Uh, well, a week ago, Friday, so, so-
Friday before.
Ten days ago, ten days ago. Um, so, I mean, it just, it just worried, that's all. And, and obviously, they're legitimate concerns. So, it, obviously, we can't get Ron Lake here right away, uh, but, but if we can't get the project manager here, then maybe we need to get Jacobs here, uh, to, to, to ask him these questions. You know, it's, it's, I'm kind of obviously glad that I went to, to the plant, but it, it made me disappointed that I had to actually go there to, uh, and, and see it with my own eyes, and we're paying, you know, these companies a million dollars to be our eyes, and, and I didn't have all this information. So, I think if Ron Lake can't come, and we need Jacobs to come, I mean, we need to be getting answers to these questions.
Jess, Jess, um, try to see if Ron Lake is back for the next work session? Well, I'm not sure what the situation is. Can I just ask a question?
What, what's the contingency or plan be for the unknown amount of time that Ron will not be there? Who will be filling that role?
Both mayors have talked, I can't remember, so I'm sure that, that they'll never get back.
We don't want to get a dishonest person off. No. Not, not, that's the contingency, not what I was, I mean, his, his-
It's better discussed, like, if they have, then, I don't feel, they'll never get back.
Right, but I'm, I'm not talking about his merit, that's-
What I'm saying, just look, look, see how far, if he can't come back soon, it's in the mayor's hands, uh, behind. There's been discussions about it, and at this point, it's anticipated that he's gonna be back within two weeks.
Do you feel that's a sufficient amount of time to not have someone in that role?
Can you put in, on a short notice for two weeks?
About that was what he was asking.
That's, that's kind of what I'm asking.
Yeah, who's under that?
Yeah.
You know, actually, it's going out to find someone, correct, on sewage treatment.
Gary Holmes, or Ken Elgert?
It'd be your two choices, that's your only two choices.
So there is no backup.
Other questions, Dick Adams?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hey, yeah, but one, one question, just a, a process question, maybe for the clerks. This said that there is additional information related to the RL that's attached, but I don't see anything attached, is that?
Which one are you referring to, can you please specify?
We're, we're on the, it's the RL that we're on, it's, um, RL nineteen dash one zero five.
Yeah, it's one zero five.
Yeah.
Does the president have a resolution, is scheduled to be applying penalties?
Yeah. We don't have any of that, or I don't have any of that.
Nineteen one oh five, am I reading it incorrectly? Or did someone?
I think he's talking to us.
Oh, that.
It says that there's other stuff attached, and Charlie says he has attachments that, that might have, should have been-
There we go, pass the lyrics.
Um, the other question was, uh- Well, I mean, I, I don't wanna take up everyone's time trying to read those right now, but, so the, the three separate fines, the BOD, TSS, the phase one, the phase two, um, to date, how, how much have we paid out in DC fines for, for not complying with those three?
You gotta say anything for the phase two, start again, that's easy.
That's easy, one zero, okay.
Sixty thousand total, including ten thousand of the non-salt health, because it's reduced from sixty thousand because we promised to do some work and told it out creek. So they were willing to reduce, so it made sixty thousand.
And all this point is coming back to the plant, it's also-
How does that work?
State's gonna find twenty off the side of the case.
All his fines, gonna go back to the plant?
Interest gives a grant due, who's there, Kurt?
Florale.
Florale, so we're getting, we don't know, involved.
Is there any limit to that?
They have not said so.
So we could incur hundreds of thousands? So we could incur hundreds of thousands of dollars? No, I'm just, I, I get that, I mean, yeah, but we could incur much, much more. I understand that, I'm just asking if there's any limit to.
They have not said.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, uh, generally, talk about the, the budget, your president general, obviously, we, and maybe some of the additional RL to do with this, but we draft your budget last year for this year, assuming that the plant would be online, I think in April? I don't know if you guys remember.
We said, we said budget again, but then it got extended to June.
To June.
Okay, so obviously, that's not the case, how is that going to impact your budget this year? And do we expect to see some changes because of that?
There should actually be some savings, because the new process will be more expensive to run, than just CEPT, which is pounding the waste of chemicals, which the EDC doesn't favor, they want to treat it biologically, so there should actually be a reduction, that's what we originally proposed. Or individual arms.
Sure, that might have to change around.
Cause the-
Um, I recall from the last, uh, joint sewage board meeting, um, that there's a, an issue with the, with our lab, um, that, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was that, you know, the, at some point, our lab is going to have to go offline, so that it can be itself upgraded. Um, and that, that time period of, uh, having our lab offline wasn't accounted for? And so, we're going to have to rent some sort of a, a lab, or contract with some sort of outside testing service?
The original plan was to fix half the lab, move the existing lab into that half, and then work on the other half. But the test bill apparently won't give a conditional certificate of occupancy, so a lot of people into the lab while the other half is being constructed. That wasn't researched well enough to begin with, no doubt. So now, I was suggesting we find an offsite lab, or rent something, lease something, but the EDC says it has to be an outside lab, if you're going to call it an outside lab, so we can't go somewhere else.
You, you understand what this is, this is another, this is another admin building, this is, this is literally another admin building. I mean, it's, it's insane.
I, I don't know the rest.
How long has it been resolved?
It's, uh, John can explain it the best.
Well, it's all blocked.
It was a waste of money, only million dollars was wasted, all eighty hundred thousand, close enough to the money. There, we wasted up the taxpayers' dollars, go in.
Something that didn't work.
Okay.
Temporary. Yes, it was supposed to be temporary, it was supposed to be-
Right.
It worked pretty well, but unfortunately, we were very sad, it was hard handling, so we had to remove it, and there are costs.
But this seems like it, it could have been anticipated, was, is this-
There were a lot of things that could have been anticipated, they don't have.
He, okay, well, I mean, who's responsible for paying for this, if, uh, if we do have to pay for some sort of mobile lab, or some sort of outside testing, uh, for a period of time? Do you have a sense of-
Outside testing, we can't send some of the samples, because we knew, we could qualify them as B D hours.
We're certified on those tests, is the information we need daily.
We would have to have three curators wanting to certify these, which would cost to be more than, we have in our budget. I don't think there's an offsite solution, so we're really going to have to come up with a trailer, which will be tough to get certified, because it has to be very specific to the EDC, basically has to conspect it, and say it qualifies as a site, so we're going for a lab.
And will it fit on the construction site right now? Like, will it fit on site? Is there a place where, not knowing how big it is, you probably would ask for that?
We have trouble getting our covers, and here's one that should go there.
Other questions or comments? All right, Charlie, let's move on to the next one.
The next one is, uh, the board has asked for an increase in gas and heat plant, eighty thousand dollars. We are looking at a adjuster stream, which uses a large amount of gas for warriors, basically heating, so you put around, thirty five feet of water. So it is going to be a large increase in gas, we also have nuclear control of PPS, which makes it more difficult, so we would need additional, which is a million dollars left in that.
Questions or comments?
You, you just said you want this to be expedited?
Do you tie eighty thousand to get you through the year, or is it, is that a estimate, or do you think you're going to spend all eighty thousand?
We have chronic digesters, and some of them are flowing, we're excited, that's going to cost. At least this is progress in the right direction, we've got the digesting control.
Questions or comments? Another one, Charlie.
The board is asking for an increase in the printing vehicles line, two thousand dollars from the personal services line, publishing more like ads, and we've got some bits coming out, we're hoping, and we're suspicious of that, huh?
Questions or comments, customer?
You said, big, the wanted ads, how, how's the, how's that going? I saw there were a bunch of open positions.
Some, I'm not sure, we have filled, some has needed, and filed, well, we're going to be, so it's a one hundred percent DC.
For, for DC hours. Sorry, I'm, I'm out of time here. Sorry? We're not going to be going on this time.
Excuse me, I, I hate to be rude, but you gotta, you can't address this more, Charlie, the comment, the public comment period is upstairs, somebody's- There's just the way it works, I'm sorry. We're talking to Charlie.
So we are opting not to fill positions that are currently available, until we know what the plan is for the bruder part of the situation.
Questions or comments? I know, next one, Charlie, please.
Uh, the board is requesting legislation to allow us to participate in the non- class municipal cooperation agreement, which will allow the board of city of all, city controller, to invest some of our funds into a better and superior account, that is part of the municipal co-op.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. Craig, Craig, here, excuse me, Craig, you're on this next one right here. Well, just tell them the rules, that's all, just tell them the rules. You're on this one, we speak. Uh, before you do that, Charlie, I think, we got a lot of questions, which I'm sure nobody in the room has the answers to. Well, it's your entitled to ask, I'm not telling you can't ask questions. But I think we should have the consultant here that the city hired, to look at the privatization, Bruce Toby, to answer the questions you're going to ask. You're certainly entitled to ask him, I'm not telling you can't, but I'm sure you have a lot of questions that we can't answer.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't a rush, we were going to come and ask questions, I thought we were coming to get some information, true?
Well, go ahead, you, you're welcome to go ahead, tell me you can, but I think we should schedule Bruce Toby to come in to kickstart the questions we can't answer. I think that, that way, we, we'll have a, a discussion based on both sides of, of the issue. I mean, I, we had a conversation with Bruce Toby, but it was in a closed forum, it was a executive session at the J C, uh, Village Board, Helen, what was that?
Late January.
Late January, so it was months ago.
Yeah, people were invited to the town, but we weren't prepared. It'd be rude.
No, 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 I, I'm telling you, you're welcome to ask whatever you want, you're welcome to discuss whatever you want, I'm not telling you can't. I just, if you want, just go ahead with it, we might have all the answers, we probably don't have any answers, it's a problem, but you're certainly welcome to go ahead.
What information, what, what information do you have about what's going on in terms of, uh, requests or proposals surrounding privatization?
I downloaded the RFP from press connects. Still haven't received any information from any owner, either mayor, there is no direction as to what's going on, we haven't heard whether there's a plan, we haven't heard whether there's any, our retiree's covered, we're getting questions we can't answer from employees. And just after the RFP, while we started to get questions, and I dropped them with me here, these people are asking us basically to do their work. We got this many questions that they want answered by the end of day on Friday, that should have been part of your RFP, if that was prepared properly. So we're expected to answer questions, so we basically phase ourselves out, in an extremely urgent situation. And we didn't feel that was therapy, so we did our best, and some of them, I spent a day there prepared, and then we get worried, well, don't worry about it, now we've got a different answer, so. We feel like we're getting jerked around, frankly, I think the employees currently on the front, totally disregarding this whole process. And, I realize we can't, you know, it wasn't totally your decision, but whose decision is it? If we have a name, if we make a lead agency, to turn it on here and pick them out, and I'm not sure who's making the decisions, that concerns me.
At this point, I believe the two areas are in the same, I'm not 100% sure on that, can we jerk and address that question?
Well, I think that the issuance of the, of, of the RFP process, it was very clear that we were putting Bruce Toby on to act as a consultant, and again, going to the strategy, the development of the RFP, uh, what's included, what information needs to be gathered, but, um, certainly ultimately, it's the two owners that have to decide on the future plan, but, uh, we talked about with the, uh, issues of who's ultimately responsible, I think, go to the structure, not the, the, the management from a personnel standpoint, but the structure of management that's been around for, for many decades. So, when, uh, you're asked about the option of looking at different management styles by someone from the press inside bulletin, we can answer, and whether the portrayal of that was accurate or not, um, I'll say that, uh, having the safety and the fait accompli is certainly not our intention, but also understanding that this is the latest in sort of a long process, which the city council has been involved in, I think it was January, if I'm not mistaken, when there was a joint meeting with Bruce Toby. I also agree with, with Council and Scan, and, you know, Charlie and Craig, certainly, the need to, to be asking these questions. I just think that Bruce Toby was the, the one person that we need to answer a lot about the scope and the strategy that that's done.
But doesn't it seem like the cities come to a decision without consulting anyone, when they go, when, when you go out for an RFP? Doesn't it, does-
No, I will not.
Not, not a decision in terms of, not a decision in terms of, you know, what's the exact structure, what company are we going with, all that, all that, you know, detailed information? But in terms of, you know, we're not telling anybody that works at the plant what's going on, we're not telling city council that we're going out for an RFP, and this is, this is the details of the RFP, it's just like, you know, we are soliciting proposals for the privatization of a sewage plant, and, and it does to, to, maybe not to the mayor, or to you, but certainly to the outside spectators, seem like the cities come to that conclusion, especially when that's supported by an article where the mayor's quoted saying that, you know, however you want to characterize that.
So, I would say the city council was at the January, I was not at the, I think, members of city council were there, correct?
It was at the technical discussions.
Okay, so I was not there, so again, I can't disclose the details of it, or, or, no. But I think that in issuing an RFP, you have to see what options are available, and I think everyone would agree with this table, that the management structure is unique to New York State, has been, had a history of issues as it relates to transparency, as it relates to accountability, who's held accountable for different things, with a sort of a nebulous board structure, we need to look at with a state of the art facility, a different way of thinking about management, and that doesn't have anything to do with the police work there, it has to do with the government structure when it was, uh, when it was originally built, and this is a process, this is absolutely a process. And I think that, uh, the same way that the, the paper writes about the developments happening downtown, saying that Hukabara will be coming to State Street, Hukabara's not coming to State Street, they've withdrawn their application, because that, that needs approval, it needs feedback, just the way that, uh, any RFPs need to be approved by city council, that process is yet to happen. But, the idea that, um, we have a plan in place, it's not being communicated, is, it's not the case, the plan is to see the options.
So it also does, doesn't figure with what the mayor said on Bob Joseph, I mean, like, I didn't, I, I could, I could-
What did the mayor say on Bob Joseph? I didn't hear.
I mean, he, what the mayor said on Bob Joseph, uh, confirmed what was quoted, uh, what he was quoted as saying in the press connects on.
Yes, he, he, he believes that the new management structure is new, it's what he believed in two thousand and thirteen, when he, when he ran for office on this very issue, and this would lead to that.
But, but we can, you know that I agree with you on that, you know, you know, I can agree with you on us reevaluating management structures, you know, I can agree that, that maybe having the politically appointed sewage treatment board isn't the best way to manage a plant, you know, we've all agreed on that, but, but that's, I don't, I mean, we're talking about privatization, that is the topic of conversation.
Private management, correct, is the point?
I don't know.
Private, private management team, right? Where the, where the city and Johnson City are stakeholders, right?
Johnson City and Binghamton are the stakeholders.
That's true. They do, they do.
Sure, right, right, yeah, I mean, okay.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is a process, and again, Bruce Toby can speak a lot more, and I want to go back to him about the way this has been done in, in other communities, the way that the city, uh, Johnson City should be looking at advice that he would give, as well as answering any questions, uh, one of the things being made clear in the RFP is, show us how you're going to retain employees at the plant. That's one of the, the issues that needs to be addressed.
So is, is the mayor, or yours, or whomever's issue with the politically appointed sewage board, is it with the actual management at the plant itself? Is it with the employees?
Construction?
Is it, yeah, is it with, I have a lot of issues with construction, is it, like, what, what, they're, you're characterizing the, the issues of management, I just, I, what are the mayor's issues with management?
You have a ready facility, right, that needs to be managed properly, we need to evaluate the ways that that makes the most sense for the rate payers. This is one of the ways that's being explored, and based on his experience, uh, in government, and talking about the structure over a long period of time, which is, no one's often this prone, uh, that, a new direction, it should be very seriously looked at, and that one that he was for. But the mayor is just one piece in all of this, Mayor Johnson City, the trustees in Johnson City, this council, and that's, I think, was very important as well. I understand the mayor was, the one who was out there, but Bruce Toby is another person that's, that's very critical of this process, and was hired by this council and the mayor, and the village, to guide us through this process.
Cameron, I, I, I'm sitting here, I mean, I don't want to be by this table, I'll speak for myself, I have an agent sitting on this here. We have to wait to see the process go through before, at the end, is it, does it make sense to hyper-pretend firm? Does it not make sense? I, I have a minute.
We don't, we don't have any other question to talk about.
So there's a lot that, there's a lot of discussion going on here, and a lot, there are a lot of overheads too, but we have to wait to see what the process is, if it makes sense.
I would caution that the privatization, you got, do you need accountability, are you using it? If you look at any of the failed, no, go on, use Google, failed privatization in place law, first one comes up, they privatized, they lost accountability. The city, the owners, then have to hire people to body them and maintain control over them, and that was the complaint, citizens lost accountability. You're starting out with the homeowners here from Apple, privatization works when people have choices, where your area was private, this was municipal, I can go to the cheaper one. People are hooked into this system, they have no concern or no say over the market, they have to take the privatization, that's not going to help them.
Yeah, but through all the years, Charlie, with the, uh, allowed this management, in the, in the last two, three decades, what say did the rate payers have when, when their rates went up?
They had their elected officials who should have been keeping an eye on the score.
Ten years ago, ten years ago, they went up fifty percent?
Not the ones now, nobody was looking at the construction when Johnson City was the lead agency, and they shorted the three- Nobody was looking at the construction when Johnson City was the lead agency and they shorted the three bar. Who was on site every day? Was the production manager's office on site 40 hours? No, they were spot checking, and the people looking at construction said, yeah, it's fine, we're good, we're good. Well, that didn't work. Nobody checked them, even, we're going down that same road, and it's scary to watch them.
Going down the same road.
Privatization is.
Same mistakes are being made again. Bruce, that you know.
The company that comes in to operate is gonna say, well, you gave us a plan, it's effective capital, it's structured, that's your problem. So you're gonna pay for it again, that's not gonna help the rate payer at all, it's still part of your sewer fund.
Are the, are the risks of, you know, that are associated with, um, with privatization made more or less severe by waiting until the plant comes online, like the new, uh, the new systems come online?
I actually did it through, through, there's three types, design, build, operate. We hire somebody private, that goes in, designs the plant, builds the plant, and operates it. That's one system, that's not what happened here. There's a design, build, own, operate transfer, where somebody designs the plant, builds it, they own it until it's operational. Once it is operational and working, then they turn it over to the municipality, or they run it, and go give it away. Again, you didn't do that. I don't see any case where somebody is asked to come and privatize a plant before it's completed. How did they give you a meaningful number? And what happens when they come back and say, oh, we've got another cost of the run, we're not gonna hit these deadlines?
Well, these are questions for Mr. Toby when we.
Mr. Toby doesn't run wastewater treatment plants, I don't think he would have the answers. He'll say, well, wait and see until the propulsives come in.
Well, we need, we need to hear more voices on this, that's all.
You should be hearing from your production crew, you should be hearing from Jacobs, they should, all that updates. They should say, we're missing these deadlines, who's doing the monitoring reports now? I understand Jerry Bass, and then Jacob, and now we're losing Radlet, we're gonna get fined again because we're releasing them off the reports. Those are obligated under the concealer, under the E C. This is the kind of things, when we point these out, he's like, oh, we're not your own business, you shouldn't be doing this here, we don't have a dysfunction. We're very, right, because we care about the public, we care about the public health in the river, we care, we fish, we live there, we're members of the community. And I don't think anybody in this room has ever said, I don't want the municipal employee department, municipal service, when I took this job, I was just wanting to work on a wastewater treatment plant because it sounds nice. We care, we're gonna bring in people who don't care. If they say, here's case in point, seasonally, your wastewater or your water treatment plant dumps the sledge to us, we have to shut down facilities, compounding that because it would plug, it would fill up the VAFs. If you've got a private firm in there and they say, no, no, you can't submit that because that's not part of the, except in this term, it's, what are you gonna do? You just look at putting your own sledge plant in there, decided that would cost way too much money. What do you gotta do? What's gonna happen when they say, well, we could run this cheaper without freedom of liberty, because they could've put a lot of accident. We're private, we don't care if we're not going anywhere, who's gonna not accept that grievance? What are you gonna do with it?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure there's, you know, you're giving a lot of scenarios here, Charlie, we, we need more answers.
Somebody should be looking at somewhere, that's managed.
That's what we're gonna do, there's nothing, there's nothing on the table, there's nothing on the table right now. Well, do you see any legislation?
I didn't see any.
Okay, okay, okay. What I'm saying is, I didn't get any.
What do you mean it's not what you're hearing, I don't understand.
When the mayor says we have dysfunctional management, privatization is in it, and that's the first we hear about it, as long as we see the headline in the papers, like, oh, the phones ringing. People say, look, am I still applying, what's going on?
Mr. President, uh, I agree with you wholeheartedly in that there, you know, there's not, there's not a proposal in front of us, so we have to wait until there's a proposal in front of us to understand everything, I totally agree with that. With that being said, you know, the, the, the informa, the RFP does exist, you have, our employees are at the plant, they're just worried about their jobs, and, um, and they're also worried about the future of this plant, because, because they, because they want the best for it, so, you know.
As we do.
As we do too. So, um, you know, we, we don't, we don't have to get heated with it, they're just asking questions, and, and I think all seven of us are frustrated that we can't answer them as well as we probably want to.
Sure, yeah, it's true, right.
And I know Councilman Carter's here, been frustrated with this plant since we started eight years ago.
Yeah.
And he was there before, and it's, I have nothing but a nightmare. So, hopefully, we can get some answers, and I think we ought to get more people in here to talk about it. And I think Bruce Toby wouldn't be a bad, maybe he can't answer the questions either, and he may do the same thing that Charlie just said.
I don't know.
But I'd like to get him there.
Yeah, find out.
Maybe you can.
Councilor Livingston? I'd like to make a suggestion, just given how complicated this is and how, I mean, I, I get that the, the RFP is just a proposal, and, you know, the bids come in, and, I mean, I get the process and that, that nothing is written in stone, but given how vast that process would go, if it, you know, if we decide to, to pick one of those, I think we should commit to, uh, to having somebody come in, um, on a, you know, over the next few work sessions, Bruce Toby, somebody from Jacobs, you know, so that we, and also our project manager, is that, is that his, his title? You know, once he's well enough to, to come back to work. Because I think that if, if there's a chance that this, this plan is gonna go, we've got a lot of information, a lot of questions that are completely, we're completely in the dark about, and I keep hearing, you know, conflicting things from, uh, people speaking about it in the public, people from the mayor's office. I mean, for instance, the, the, the comment about this being a, a brand-new, you know, state-of-the-art, uh, facility, it seems, it seems to conflict a little bit with what I'm learning about, uh, about what the state-of-the-art is, that, that it actually, the process that we're gonna have in place in the new plant is gonna look a lot like, uh, a process that a lot of our operators are familiar with running, is that?
Yes, we, we ran a VAF very similar, that was state-of-the-art at that time. Lots changed since 2001. It's very, very similar to what we ran last time, different vendor. And right now, we are going through all training, a lot of training.
We need trainings to run the plant.
The owners are paying for our training. And one of the individuals who just gave us the training, um, completed his training, he made a statement before he left. Training last month has been a pleasure. You both and your staff are among the best I've worked with. Thank you for engaging and evolving and encour, encouraging your staff to engage as well. So.
Do you feel like the staff that we currently have right now are capable of operating?
Experienced, we ran them. He could tell as soon as he started training. We were, we were asking advanced questions. He knew at that point that he had experienced that, his work would be it, it's very similar. And hopefully it's built better this time, that's what we're worried about, and that's what the owners should be worried about. We don't wanna end up where we were last time. That was hu, it was a huge hit for the community. For.
And, and just a, a question about the, also the infrastructure, from what I understood, the, uh, only half of the buildings on, onsite are gonna be new buildings, and about 80% of the infrastructure is going to be new, but then, uh, a lot of the infrastructure was, was sort of torn out.
Infrastructure is original, it's old.
Yeah.
And that's via redact. So there's a mixture of redact and, but it's not a brand-new facility. There's a difference there. And, brand-new is breaking ground, everything's brand-new, that's not the case here.
We're building a 28th facility the other time, that's all.
Yeah.
I just wanna say something about the staff. We're experienced, we've went through a lot there, flood all six. Recovered from that. They wanna work us, astronaut, to get that plant back up and running. Then, that's when the VAF project was under construction. So, a lot of that equipment, loss damage and the flood had to be replaced. The new plant comes online, there was issues with it, I don't have to go into detail with it, I think a lot of people in here know what the issues were with that facility. Factor velocity going on right now, which I don't know, I don't know if we can talk about. We made it work. There was an individual for, for G TAC to come up to look at what we were able to accomplish with that system, and he was amazed. We were, we were able to run it as long as we did. And meet permit, we didn't meet permit everyone, but we did meet permit with it. Then there was a catastrophe with the wall. We kept running it. Kept on running it, and then there was issues with some other cell structures that they, they thought were unsafe, so we took them offline. But we kept running it. Down in Florida, 2011 had. That was even worse than 2006. So, we went right back to work, started pumping out the buildings, getting our settling tanks cleaned out, getting things back online, and got the plant up and running again. That's the kinda staff you have there, you're hardened. Been through a lot, so. With that being said, we went through all this construction. And it hasn't been easy trying to keep that plant running, because just about every aspect of that process has been compromised in one way, shape, or form. And we've, we've been able to meet permit, our permit is very under contemporary, but we have robusted permit once with all that construction going on. And we've been walking around in the mud, and ice, and snow, everything's temporary. Our, 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 our storage capacity for our chemicals, I mean, we, we, we take so many deliveries because they, my, my storage capacity isn't there anymore. So we can't run out of chemicals, and we never have. So, we were just getting to the point where the employees were starting to feel a bit about this project, starting to wind down. And wanted to get back to full treatment, seeing a nice outflow. And everybody was optimistic, excited. And then, we're talking about privatizing. Just. It's hard.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Jess, on that, can I have a little question?
We have RL 19-97, amended 2019 fire department budget to transfer plants to various budget lines. RL 19-98, amended 2019 general budget to increase fire department overtime. RL 19-99, agreement with compliance for workers' compensation. RL 19-101, right-of-way agreement with mobile light, for telecommunication services. RL 19-102, agreement with Ford County to establish reimbursement for Echo District projects. And RL 19-103, versus how we've got there, and Charlie had asked for RL 19-106 to be expedited.
Okay. Mr. Congressman, can I have a little?
So, I was wondering if we could get, if we could ask Lori to come in and give us an update on the, um, on the status of the RL I submitted in the first work session this year on, um, doing some reporting stuff and, uh, you know, updating the report.
Jess, can you just get a little, please, next work session? I'm sorry?
I thought you were gonna do that through the budget.
Okay, we can, yeah, just cancel them.
No, just I was asking.
No, you're, you're, it's probably, we'll, we'll go through it.
Yeah, I didn't recall that, I, I was just wondering if, uh, I mean, I, I haven't, I've sent emails to her and haven't heard back about a number of things, and I was interested in, uh, you know, just getting, getting an update on, you know, has she put together a plan? Do we have some numbers?
It's a little, it's a little session, so it's a, I've been trying to work with the folks who work in the area from, to the AP upgrades and the council chambers, and it's still a process, um, to upgrade the physical infrastructure, and then do whatever programming you like, because it's, you know, it's shot, it's fierce. That's where things kinda currently stand, and again, I was the impression that, given that, some pricing, council, the prices were a little bit.
So we're gonna, I'm sure probably very good for.
Okay, so we're gonna have an answer by then, then, is, that's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, what we need to budget next year for upgrades to the council, it's really sound, it's the biggest thing right now. Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? No, both of you return, we're done.